Doing the certainly the flag of the public which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Well, okay, so roll call are we'll have here three. We complex them first with today's agenda, buddy, okey doke. Treasurer's warrants. And some very lot conveyances, do I have a motion on those?
Yeah, so clear. Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes.
There's one small page to that.
Okay.
Um, as far as the naming of Main Street Bridge, I just want to point out that David Lewis was the one who originally brought it to us, and then I wrote the speech based on information that Harold Merrill provided.
Okay. We've got that change. Well, I have a motion to approve the minutes with that one amendment. Joel. Then wait a second.
I'll second, but I have another minor.
Oh.
It's control.
Hang on.
Um, it's really minor, it's it's just at the top of page four where I was giving the report for the administrative committee. Um, and it says they are not ready yet for assistance, how many is there? What I really think I said was we were working on that prior to the job description and that, you know, that wasn't quite ready yet, but we are firmly moving forward to go.
Okay.
So just clarification on that, that call.
That's true.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Joel, you want us, you want to do two for one?
Absolutely.
Now the second, Tracy, okay, any other corrections? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. I just do what I need. Okay. So quick claim deeds. Do we have any? And so we're recessors, municipal officers. Um, not making any changes to that. Okay, so open session. We have tonight, we have a public hearing for the main department of transportation. Then we're going to go after that, we'll go into open session because if people have questions, that would be the best time to hold your questions until the regular open session. Okay, Mike, we're gonna turn it over to you. No. Turn off these lights. James could have turned. And would it help if we turned off the other lights?
Oh, Brian. I got him.
Hey. Hang on one second, should we be doing this at this point? It's fine to be doing this now instead of putting it on our agenda item. If it is an open hearing.
If we're making a decision.
Yeah, that still has to be on the agenda. Okay, for this part.
Well, I'm just wondering about the order of things for people who wanted to be heard about something else and didn't plan to be heard for half an hour or whatever.
Yeah. Mike, you're not gonna take a half hour, are you? You want to get home.
Um, I'm gonna give an update on Dover Bridge and an update on two other bridges, you know, bring around 20 minutes.
Is that, is, does anybody have anything burning that they need to get on their chest before leaving? Okay. All right. Mike Fireway, please.
Yeah. I'm here tonight to talk about Dover Foxcroft Dover Bridge, my name is Mike White, I'm with Maine DOT Bridge Program. Department is going to be replacing Dover Bridge on Essex Street. And Dover Bridges on Essex Street over the Scaticus River. This graphic kind of shows that. Upstream from the KDI dam. And basically my purpose today is to get buy-in from the town and get, hopefully get sign-off on the admissible state agreements needed for this project. These are the key bullet points. Basically DOT needs permission from the town to make use of local roads, they're going to be officially signed as a detour route as part of this project. As part of this project, we are closing the bridge and rerouting some traffic. Second bullet here is we're asking basically the town going to take over long-term responsibility for some rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Um, that we're going to be installing as part of the project at the crosswalk north of the Dover Bridge. The cost of putting it in the department, DOT is taking care of all that cost. I mean, it should be very, very little, they actually going to be solar powered, it's not even electric though. Third bullet here is town accept responsibility for doing any winter maintenance. DOT is not going, doesn't plan to do any winter maintenance on the sidewalks. Um, so like that, pass that responsibility on to town. Uh, please take care of the sidewalk. And we're basically asking the town, uh, as part of this project, we're going to be putting in a lighting system. Uh, the town to take over the maintenance and operations of that system and pay the electric bill. We'll get it all installed. The rest of the town to, uh, do the long-term maintenance and operations and pay the electric bill. What I'm showing on the screen right now is the primary detour route for the project, opposing Essex Street for the Scaticus River Bridge. We're rooting basically folks up primarily that Fairview Avenue by where the fair is today. Down Summer Street, uh, North Street, and then basically back across, uh, East Main Street. Going to be the primary vehicular official sign detour. Uh, Fairview Avenue is, is a local road. All the other roads are state aid or state maintained roads. As part of this project, there's going to be a very small section, um, on the north side of the bridge where Vaughn Road comes in just north of the Dover Bridge. About a hundred foot section of road, we're going to be closing that in order to build a new abutment. Uh, we gotta, we gotta dig a very big hole, unfortunately we can't, um, keep Vaughn Road open. We're gonna close that end piece and we gotta redirect traffic that's using Vaughn Road. This is one, one route we'd like to flag, we're trying to catch, like catch at least some of the traffic out in East Dover and send them down Essex Street. We'll put some signage out there, if you get some traffic, we know we won't catch all of it. And the Public Works Committee reviewed our initial plan here a few weeks back, provided some comments. They wanted DOT to sign some, some of the local roads close to the bridge. Uh, we looked at the different routes, the different roads, we tried to figure out which one is probably the best ones. What we kind of decided is focus on Essex Street. The best route for them is to come, come down Cedar Street. They want to get back onto Vaughn Street. Uh, kind of did that, just looking at site distance, you come out of the end of Cedar Streets, get pretty good site distance. And then if you're on, you didn't take the other detour route, you're coming down Vaughn, seeing that final sign, hey, go this way. We just want to send people up Maple Street. The end of Maple Street where it comes into Essex Street is the best site distance. So we're gonna have kind of a directional detour here. Beside. And the very last little side street close to the bridge, Elm Street, we're basically just going to put some signs up that say local traffic hall.
And Mike, you want to remind everybody roughly how long that is anticipated?
Yeah, um, this will be roughly a two-year project. We're asking contractor completed in, by the end of '27. So this is going to be a fairly long project, also two years.
But that, and then specifically for the secondary detour, how long the anticipated secondary detour Vaughn Street is anticipated?
It'll be most of that same time, potentially it's going to be a little shorter, depending on how soon the contractor starts on that detour. Uh, he works on that abutment that's causing the need for that detour, so at least a year, year and a half, probably.
Can I ask a question? Or do you want them all at the end?
Uh, if you got a simple one, I'll take one now.
Well, I was just thinking about the impact on the, you know, Essex Street being a gravel road and the increased traffic. Mm-hmm. So just took those guys.
Yeah, it's part of the agreement that I've sent to you guys to see before, is the DOT will take responsibility for maintaining Essex Street um, during the project, and that gravel piece of road, we're gonna grade it several times and, uh, we'll make sure it's in good condition while it uses the detour route. Another big issue the Public Works Committee asked of the department is, uh, can we do anything at North in Summer Street intersection? We have about 2,200 cars, we're basically rerouting by closing down, uh, the Dover Bridge and majority of that traffic is going to go through the North Summer Street intersection. Um, it's a legitimate concern. And we've done some analysis and look at this intersection.
Can we cover this stuff, Mike?
I'll let you cover this, John.
I'm John Terry O, I'm the region board traffic engineer for the area. So, uh, Mike did ask you to take a look at the operation of North Street and Summer Street, uh, due to this project. Right, so typically when you, I don't know how much everyone knows about that type of work, but I'm just going to be your basis. Um, when you look at an intersection that is graded basically on levels of service, level of service A is great, level of service F is bad, just like any type of report card. Um, so it, so when you run a level of service analysis, it gives you the opportunity to take a look at existing conditions versus proposed conditions. And so, um, we had, I had some traffic counts at North and Summer. You know, that were stated from DOT. Uh, they were 24-hour counts, I looked at peak hours, the peak hour is, in the morning, it's like, uh, actually it's like 11:12 according to the counts that I saw, and then in the evening it was 4:00 to 5:00 P.M. Um, so I ran a level service for the existing conditions and actually pop up to the.
Go ahead, Sean.
All right, so this is kind of what I looked at, and this is the AM peak hour. And so the first column is no build, everything the way it currently functioned. And so Summer Street operates the level service C, which is, which is good. And then North Street, northbound, southbound operate a level of service A, which is effective because Summer Street is stop sign controlled and North Street, you know, is free to go both directions. Um, under the build scenario during the morning peak hour, it operates at a level service B when we, you know, when we've added the volumes to the intersection, and those volumes, like Mike said, it was, I don't know, something like
2,200.
2,200 during the day, so a typical peak hour is, is close to like 10% of, of the daily volume. So what, what we have for design volume is around 270 vehicles. Uh, that needed to be diverted to this detour, so basically, uh, put, um, like 135 vehicles making the right from North Street onto Summer Street, and then the other 141 vehicles, whatever, whatever worked out was actually making a left from Summer Street onto North Street. And though, that's the heavy volume for the detour, but that's also the heavy volume at that intersection right now. It's most people heading northbound take a right, and most people from Summer Street take a left. So, um, so anyhow, under the built condition, doing nothing, leaving everything this way it is, it's a level service D, which, which still is, you know, in traffic engineer terms, A through D are, are pretty acceptable, pretty typical for, for busy areas. You kind of get concerned when you're at level service E and F. And so that was doing nothing. And jump to the, jump to the other slide, the next one, just so I can give the rationale for what's going to happen. All right, so no build and then build, you see the level of service F.
Yep.
So if that, if that came back at, you know, during the PM peak hour level service D, I'd say, hey, we don't really need to do anything. You know, people, you know, it's a construction area, the town's under construction for this major bridge, and yes, you're going to see some delays and you're going to experience, you know, some congestion due to that. Um, but F is, you know, F is kind of, all right, that's going to be problematic. And the reason it's problematic is because when, you know, when people have a certain amount of delays, they become impatient and then they kind of, uh, drive not as responsibly as usual. So, um, I looked at other alternatives. One is an always stop, which is making all the traffic stop at that intersection. Every approach gets a stop sign, everyone, everyone takes their turn when they're at the intersection. And then I looked at putting a traffic signal there, it would be a temporary traffic signal just for the construction of this project. So you can kind of see under the build PM peak hour, you know, always stop for Summer Street is 20.1 seconds with a signal of 22.3 seconds. Um, North Street northbound, 22.5, you know, with a signal of an A, which is good. But, but C's not shabby, you know, and then North, North Street southbound, it actually, it's 13.7 seconds under the always stopping, it actually has more delay under the traffic signal, right? So a traffic signal in this scenario isn't, isn't the best solution, I don't think. One, it's going to be, well, one, it's expensive. And two, um, it doesn't give you that much more bang for the buck. And we have space constraints out there to put out that equipment. These would all be trailer traffic signals, so they'd occupy, uh, you know, more parking in, in the area intersection. And it would also kind of restrict some of the movements of the driveways that are right in that area because, uh, because of the equipment. So, um, you know, my recommendation is to go to the always stop. And I don't know, I looked at, kind of a different subject, but closely related, is this intersection has been a high crash location twice in, in the last couple of years. It's not currently a high crash location, but it has in the past. And, um, it's the only, it's the only intersection in Dover that's a high crash location. I looked at, I looked at, and actually, I, I brought a bunch of stuff with me, like it looks like it's going to be challenging to get out, get it up there. But I, I did, did like a big aerial of the area, and there's like high crash location in North Street and Summer Street, and then a high rock crash location all the way in Gilbert. Everything else, you know, in the area is not a high crash location. So the, what I kind of liked about this option is, I'm not, yeah, exactly, maybe keep it. You, you get to see how it, you get to see how the intersection functions under extreme conditions because you're going to have a whole lot more traffic there, and then when the construction traffic goes away, you know, if it worked well, you know, during the construction period, it's going to work a whole lot better, um, you know, as a permanent situation. But that, that's a later conversation and that's to be determined later on, but it, it just gives you the opportunity to see how it functions, so, um, that's kind of my thoughts on that matter. Then you have to, you know, feel free, that was kind of a quick overview, so if you have any questions about it, or if someone, you know, later on wants to look at more deep, deeper dive, I'm, I'm willing to do that.
Just to recap again, we looked at, you know, they decided that do nothing was an option, you know, level at, probably do a level of service, but too bad. And, uh, John, look at two different options, a temporary signal and always stop sign. And another issue we didn't touch on was temporary traffic signals, it seems like every, every single project we do, no matter how reliable they are, you know, every once in a while, they blink off.
Yeah.
You get that.
If I.
Even emergency phone tree, but it takes a while for somebody to get there and get things fixed.
If you can come up with.
Stop signs work all the time.
Not a signal, you know, it's better to go nothing.
Yeah.
And, and traffic signals introduce their own sorts of crashes too, a lot of times you install a traffic signal, everyone thinks, oh, this can be much better, and then you end up with, you know, three times as many rerun crashes because that's what is typical of traffic signals. Um, the crash that out there also is all of the traffic, so there was like eight crashes. When it was a high crash location for two years, there were eight crashes over a three-year period. Six out of the eight crashes were basically people coming off Summer Street, getting struck by someone on North Main Street in the direction. And so, and for both times in high crash location, that was the majority of those types of crashes. So.
Anyway, John already touched on this, the, there are some definitely other issues with traffic signals, again, going to be lost with some parking spaces, there's going to be several driveways that they don't want to be able to do rights, turns in and out of them. Uh, several driveways, traffic in those places. Again, we're, we're leaning towards, you know, hey, we want to implement an always stop here.
So with those always stops, we would put, uh, stop, we, we would use the flashing stop signs. And we'd also on, uh, North Street, we have, uh, flashing stop ahead sign. So kind of like to really bring it, bring up, plus during the construction project, we'll have message boards in advance of those as well, saying change in, change in traffic pattern, you know, pay attention aware.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
And way back down the corner, additional.
Okay.
Traffic pattern change add. So that's what the department plans to, gonna, gonna be modifying our plans up here and we're gonna be, uh, providing an all, always stop during construction at North and Summer Street intersection. Now, let me give a quick update on two other projects I've brought earlier this year. Department is also replacing, uh, several other bridges a few years out, um, in the Dover Foxcroft area. Brought this one. Earlier selection meeting earlier this summer, Stinchfield Brookridge, this is on Route 7, south of downtown Dover Foxcroft. And we, that meeting, I brought up three different options. Uh, we can try to maintain traffic on the project site by building a detour to one side. Um, that's very expensive, it's going to cost over half a million dollars. Pretty significant impacts to the abiding property owners, and it makes it a significantly longer duration project. Second option is, uh, maintain traffic during the project is to make use of existing roads. And there's two options, an east one and a west one, but they all involve local roads. Uh, and new roads are a combination of pavement, which has been on the greatest condition, and long sections of gravel road. Initially DOT was not super enthusiastic of, on sending folks over local roads. And the third option, and this is our preferred option, uh, we'd like to, uh, send folks around and not make use of local roads, we're going to make use of state highway. Uh, we'd send folks to the west, this would, they'd make use of Route, divert Mount of Dexter up Route 23 and cut back over using 6 and 16. Um, and that would be for hopefully no more than 30 days in the summertime in July and August. So with no impacts of the busing and, uh, allows for, allows for quick construction.
But that's, I mean, that's the route we're signing.
That is the official route we're signing?
Official route we're signing, that doesn't mean, that doesn't stop anyone from using whatever local road they want to use.
They're locked in circuit and I won't say anything, but a lot of shorter routes, so. But that's what we're proposing for, uh, Stinchfield Bridge on Route 7, south of there. And the Public Works Committee kind of agreed with us, it's all the best.
Yeah.
Best plan.
Mike, do you have a, do you want to, do you have another blow up or something to find, show the location of where the bridge actually is?
Uh.
About two miles out of the light.
It's a side road that comes into Route 7 called Eddie.
Board Eddie.
Yes. I want to be north of that. Bottom of that gully. That's great.
You say that's going to be 30 days?
That'll be 30 days in the summer. Here one other project, um. Okay. North of downtown Dover Foxcroft, uh, the department is going to be replacing what we call First Bridge on Route 153 over the Davie Road.
Davie Brook.
Yes, Davie Brook. It's a little ways north of, or Park Street turns off to the west. 0.7 miles north of kind of downtown. Just a little ways north of where Whittier Street comes in, outside. Um, not much of a bridge, it's really more of a good culvert. The culvert 21 feet across, uh, seen its day, it was built in 1940, it's 86 years old. And we rate it as in poor condition. What we're going to replace it with again is very similar to what we're doing in, in the Stinchfield one, south of town. We're going to be putting in a large concrete box culvert and trying to do that in 30 days. Structure is going to be close to about 24 feet fan, a good sized structure. We looked at two options for maintain traffic, we have a, not quite as many options this project, we're either going to do a road closure and make use of local roads. Again, this would be 30 days in the summertime in July and August, avoids full impacts, the buses. Second option is building a, a temporary bridge onsite. There's actually two options for local roads, there's a There's actually two options for local roads, there's a loop. To the east. Uses the Summer Street and you head up Dover Foxcroft Center Road and you come back to one fifty-three on the Bolton Road. That's about two point one extra miles, folks going north. And then there's a loop to the west, uh, it's a slightly bit shorter, folks going north. Add the one point four miles, a little more direct, um, and it involves Park Street, you know, Dawes Road and Holmes Road.
So the reason for the July and August work months is in stream work, is that the deal?
Yeah, it's number one to avoid busing impacts and the general rule, not allowed to get into the water July fifteenth.
After or before?
After July fifteenth.
Until after?
Yes, until after July.
When the waters flow out.
When waters perpetually low. While the fish are gone someplace else, uh. Just like with the Dover Bridge project, we're not gonna use a local road, it's an official signed detour, we need an agreement that explains everybody's responsibilities. And again, just like with the Dover Bridge, we would spell out what we're gonna be doing, uh, this thirty-day closure, more than likely the department would. Make sure the roads in good shape before the detours opened up, we'd, we'd grade the, rinse the roads, grade it. Uh, we would monitor it, generally our resident would do a quick drive-through every day, say, I was holding up. Uh, you know, if it wasn't deteriorating, a resident would say to the contractor, hey, you gotta get out there and do some repair work. And then when the detours reopened, totally thereafter, you know, we would, uh, basically re- regrade the road and put it back in comparable nick and that. Before the detours put in place. Those, those costs while upgrading work could be borne by the, by DOT now. Anyway, uh, these are the two broad options, um. And basically the, the department and the Public Works Committee here in town basically is preferring the west detour route using local roads. It's the shortest way around, it's the least, least cost and should be hopefully the least impact. This will be basically just hopefully pull less than thirty days, several summers out. From July fifteenth to August fifteenth. There's gonna be one small change off of the, the Dawes Road, uh. Right now, if you're coming south of the Dawes Road, you come to a yield. Uh, the Anderson Road kind of curves into it, uh, now that we're all sudden dumping. Another thousand cars down the Dawes Road, kinda makes sense, let's make Dawes Road folks be able to keep trucking and, uh. The Anderson Road folks, about a hundred and sixty cars, about one tenth of the traffic, we'll have those folks stop during that thirty days. We'll put up some signage and ensure everybody's aware of that. That's all I have.
All right, we're gonna hit the lights, so everybody be prepared to get right. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Two questions, um, I think within Protection Committee, we were thinking, could it be possibly pushed back to October, September, October? Cause that's the main life to the lake.
Unfortunately, the in-stream work windows that we get, generally from July fifteen, September thirtieth, that's when we can work in the water and do construction. Uh, we ask very frequently, can we get that expanded? And we're told the majority of the time, no. Uh, I can ask again, but I seriously doubt I'll get approval. Push it all the way into October, November.
But I think the public just needs to hear that we have tried. They don't pick August and July because of doors.
Problem is, you know, we wanna get our paving done while the weather's warm. Uh, and then a lot of times in that, a lot of times in that thirty days, they can finish the entire project, pave, guard rail, everything be done. If you push it late in the year, may have to actually come back in the spring, finish the final paving, guard rail and a lot of cleanup work. A lot of folks love it, just get in there, do the closure and get it done.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're gonna go right into, uh, open session for the public week. This is obviously, uh, a good time for the public to ask further questions of either M D O P or for us. All right, uh, we'll start on this side and work that way.
Hi, my name is Judy Dow. Uh, my family has lived in this neck of the woods for. Oh, but, uh, he said DOT or anything else?
Oh, just about this. So if we have, uh, we'll, we can come right to you right after that. Oh, there, is there anything specific to the road detours that anybody has? Uh, questions or concerns about? Yeah, yes, sir.
Say my name?
Yes, please.
R J Horowitz, uh, I'm new to town last year on East, uh, Main Street. Um, I was just curious at the two-year timeframe to, uh, replace bridges and this bridge, why is it taking two years? I mean, that, that might be a technical question, but you know, World War Two was, uh, four years, we blew up seventeen hundred bridges and built three hundred and fifty. And with the technology since nineteen forty, so.
Yeah, this is a very legitimate question, uh, again, a little big constraints that we have is we can only work in the, in the water for a certain period of the year.
Okay.
So it's about three months in the spring, we cannot do any work in the water. So basically, when the contractor gets the point, okay, I need to do some work in the water and get that three months, it's done working, three whole months. And. This work, project has a tremendous amount of work in the water, we have to build a pressle to get out, move the bridge, build a new bridge. They've got to go out to build the pier and cover substantial coffer dams around it to build it. Both abutments are, and realize the site is behind a dam, the water doesn't get, you know, in summertime dry up here, it's twenty feet deep all year long.
Right, where it is.
Uh, but then you phase all those tasks, hit those in-stream windows, it's gonna be a better part of two years.
But my question then, my second part of the question happens to be, um, I, I take it that you're not working three shifts, eight hours a day to meet that time?
No.
You're only working eight hours during a time window you have six weeks or three months.
Generally the contractor works, they generally work like ten-hour days, you know, five days a week.
Right, and what I'm saying is it would take a half the amount of time if you work three shifts.
That is one way to speed it up.
Yeah, just, I'm not arguing, I'm not trying to please, my, my position is, if you need to get it done. You, you have twenty-four hours in the day, you have a certain amount of resources, expertise, and you're dealing with a time calendar that no one has control over. Because of water, EPA, whatever happens to be, you gotta maximize your efficiency within the time allotment that you have. That's all, it's just economy. They do it in Europe, they do it in South America, the Chinese do it all over the place. They get it done. And I think that we're, we have the technology to get it done.
I don't know that we have the workforce, I mean, getting contractors to work around the clock in this area.
That's logistics, yeah, I, I guess.
It's also a significant safety factor, it is a hell of a lot more dangerous to be working on water at three in the morning with artificial illumination versus during the day.
And nothing is noise, you know, all residential homes around there, folks don't want sheep piled up.
There's, there's all kinds of reasons why not to do it. I'm just, I'm just proposing the question, that's all, you have a certain time window, you have certain resources, how do you maximize those resources? And the expense that goes with it, and you did it in half the amount of time, maybe it costs twenty percent, save twenty percent savings. Maybe that twenty percent savings is, is actually eaten up because you had to pay someone at four o'clock in the morning to work it, make it, make it happen, that's all. And there's other, there's other examples out there.
We're having, we're having challenges just getting contractors to work nights. So, I mean, we're, we're trying, we're, you know, we're working a lot of projects during the days and that, but. Um, there's, there's roadways that have very high traffic volumes on it that typically, historically DOT would say, this job needs to be done at night, but we can't get them to work at night.
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul, do you have a question about the road?
Yeah, uh, this is not about the bridge, but it's about related, and that's the intersection of seven and fifteen. Uh, is there any date on when that work is gonna get done? We had heard that in, in early August, it was gonna, the lighting was gonna come in, it still hasn't shown up, there's been nothing done yet.
Yeah, so as far, I don't know if you.
I don't, I, yeah, I'm not connected to that project.
I haven't gotten an update from the project manager for that, um, yeah, like you said, it was supposed to be August that that was completed. From my understanding, they're still waiting for the parts to be delivered and that's, I don't know.
Hope they get it done before the paving season.
Yeah.
Okay. You're up. That you, I'm looking, I had to.
Thank you, uh, again, my name is Judy Dow, uh, my family has lived in this area for almost two hundred years. Uh, and about a hundred and fifty years or so ago, uh, one of my ancestors donated land to the town for the cemetery in East Dover. Uh, and all my life I've known it as the Dow Cemetery, above, probably more than eighty percent of the people buried in there are related to me. And, uh, the cemetery is now called the East Dover Cemetery and nobody knows how or when or why that changed. And I was just, uh, requesting if we could perhaps rename the cemetery to Dow Cemetery of East Dover. Pretty, you know, an easy request and I appreciate your consideration.
Um, Alcina, you, you did a little bit of digging to try to figure out roughly when the names started changing, did you, did you come up with something?
I got as far back as the early nineties and it was still referencing East Dover, so it had to have been probably maybe seventies or eighties, I haven't. Actually locked down a timeframe, digging the box before people were identified, when that shit got switched over.
Okay.
So there's nothing concrete.
Yeah, I didn't find the, the scoring down on that, okay, not surprising if you haven't gone back, there's probably some box with mouse shoes in it that has paperwork on that.
Yeah.
We can certainly take a look into that, that would be, which committee do we think, Public Works? Yeah, right, okay, um, well, yes?
Um, I would also mention that, uh, my cousins and I would probably donate towards the cost of the sign, a new sign.
Oh, excellent.
They don't know that yet.
But we already like, yeah.
Are they in the cemetery?
Okay, thank you very much, we'll, we'll take a look at that, um.
I just have something quick, uh, light inferno, um, I just, uh, have noticed that this summer we've had a lot of heat. Um, hot days, very hot days, and I'm grateful that the current center has been open. Um, however, I, I'm, I'm a subscriber to the information, um, uh, communication system, the.
The Everbridge. Everbridge.
The Everbridge, and, um, we only had one notification as far as I can tell, that it was a heat day and that the center would be open. And I think that the intention, somehow we need to be getting that word out, as people sign up, they need to know that something's gonna happen. There's also a road closure right now, just around the corner here, and maybe that would be something that would be periodically good to, to identify so, for people who might not know that. I mean, most people who live here know it, but, um, those are the kinds of things, so I realize Alcina's been very busy. And I'm not sure that we have the right person making the, having to do the task, it's a task.
Right.
And we need to figure out how to get the task done efficiently so that it gets out quickly, uh, that's my request.
Dana, can you make a note of that? Excellent. All right, there's nobody else for, Sean, oh, there you are.
Sean, I just wanted a couple of things, uh, speed limits, I talked to Alcina once, but I now realizing that this DOT project's coming up, uh. On the corner of, uh, Foxcroft Center and, and Lantil Road, being fifty-five, I think that's gonna slow down probably permanently to forty-five, cause you're gonna have a lot of extra traffic, especially. This project's coming, there's a lot of time that you and I see, we would go off that road and almost get hit rear-ended down there, cause it's really fast and it's hard turn to make on the left, so. I think at least definitely, you know, in the short term, they should lower that speed down during, during that project and permanently probably to thirty-five at least. Cause that's, that's, you know, that's actually the way to have it down. The second intersection I wanna talk about, well, our intersection is, uh, up by the R I T building, Stacy and I were, were talking and as well as the daycare owner up there about lowering the speed on that. Stretch up near the R I T building, cause there's a lot, a lot of people will bring a lot of kids up to that building and I don't know if it qualifies as the school zone. At least, at least a reduced speed area, cause there's a lot, like a lot of children, being the little bit of my, my foster child, so. I don't know if you can look at that, but it's definitely, it's a hard turn to make when somebody's under five to sixty.
Yeah, thanks. That's my shift, that's on the sixty-five zone. Thank you, Sean, uh, let's go to, over this side, Hannah first?
Hers is way more important. Please, Lacer, um, I'd like to talk about the brick building downtown, as soon as you come down seven into the center of town on Main Street, you're looking right at it. The Fitzgerald Building, uh, S and T landlords, does the town have a way of addressing, um, maintenance for S and T landlords? That building has already proven to be a safety hazard when some of the windows started falling onto the sidewalk. And some local folks were kind enough to replace those windows on their own, um, when the moose went through, again, got replaced, um, but. It's, it's, it makes me sad, it makes me sad to see one of the oldest buildings in town just falling apart. And I was wondering if there's some way that the town can address the issue with the owner as an S and T landlord who has neglected the building for years. Um, that, because I feel like it could be a really sweet building if something was done with it, so anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Danny?
Hey, I am Nan Stewart with the K F C, um, just kinda giving you an update, I'm Benialfermer. Um, we are on track at the moment to reopen the pool hopefully on October first. And we're penciling in a grand opening hopefully for November first. Um, we are running into snag after snag after snag with the sandblasting we're doing right now. Um, we have service techs coming out again tomorrow, we've sandblasted about ten hours this weekend with a pot that just keeps clogging over and over and over, and we've made about five feet in ten hours. It's, it's not going good, um, but that's happening. Uh, we did this with Austin Seavey, he has built in Foxcroft Center, and we have hired Silas Popolski as our program director up there, we have a new program director on, maybe he's gonna do a really good job for us over there. Um, everything else is completely up and running and rolling over there, our summer camp went phenomenal, we're doing after-school camps again, um, everything's going really, really well with that. I have a question, I'm not sure how it works, I'm not a hundred percent sure like what I'm asking. So the economic development grant for the state, we're asking if the town has applied for that for anyone yet, because I think you can apply for only one business. If you have not applied for that, could we be a potential candidate for the economic development grant? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, uh, there has been no group on, I'm sorry about those, I don't see if I first asked.
You just asked. Yep.
I just asked. Yeah, first ask, so, okay. So I have the information, I've never gone through the process, I don't know if you've done an economic development grant, okay, perfect, so just connect with you? Yep, beautiful. Thank you all. Oh, and we did put in our fly metrics gym, we got the grant from Banker Savings Bank and that's like ninety percent complete right now. So we're looking for some people to run some classes and starting September, first week of September, we do pickleball, I'll be on Fridays, cause our three brand new pickleball courts. Are in, I haven't been here in a while, oop, there's three brand new pickleball courts, and they're beautiful. So, that's a good thing. Thank you guys.
Yeah, you have to go fire away.
Um, Amanda?
Yes.
Life guard at the beach with, in collaboration with the town and the pack, I've been out there a few times and there's no, I've not been there when there was a, a lifeguard that we have any.
If it's happening, let me know, there's supposed to be somebody there from eleven to four, seven days a week.
Right, okay.
Yes, so if there isn't, that's a problem.
Right, right.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, cause I don't, I've gone down and checked probably five or ten times and it's always been going well, but they do punch in remotely on their phones.
Perfect. Perfect.
So we're all paying them too if they're not there. So if you go down the beach between eleven and four, there should be a guard. By all means, please let me know.
Yeah, I could have been before eleven, I'm not sure, sorry.
Sure, but yeah, no, I think that's great information. After that, we've got a couple of indexers. They didn't punch in, but they didn't show up, so. So we have forty-two kids, and the three swim lessons are over. So, shout out to you.
Thirty, do you have a question?
Does this have to be about the DOT thing?
No, by our way. Make a statement? Just, Dr. Ne?
Yep, my name's Frank Staten. I own property at Foxcroft Center Road. I don't have an address yet, because Brian from Coeur d'Alphabans said I couldn't get one until my subject was in. But I had an incident this last Sunday up there. I didn't realize it'd be seven years, so I only made five of these. I just give them to the.
Give one to her and she can make copies.
Well, I got four on the car, yeah, Bill. I'll just give them all to her.
You can pass them around, we'll share.
Fifty-two, so I gotta use my glasses, read this, read the statement. You'll understand why I have this vest on, and I understand what I'm gonna say. The town doesn't have a lot of control over, but if you let me read this, you'll understand why the town could have prevented what happened. Like I said again, my name's Frank Staten. I got a piece of property on Foxcroft Center Road. On August sixteenth, about ten thirty PM, I discovered a dog on my property. After messaging three neighbors directly in front of me and inside me, they was their dog. And it wasn't. I posted a ad on Dolphoff Community Page, about eleven fifteen. I took it out of my truck, because somebody said it might have been the guy up street to see if it'd just go home, and I thought it did. At about eleven forty-five PM, I took my dog out of, repeated four, went to bed. And it came back, thinking it was friendly. I attempted to get in the back of my truck, this dog in the back of my truck, because my dog is in the front taking a peek. And as I tried to get that dog in my truck, it lunged out of the truck, sniffing my dog's butt, trying to hump him, trying to sniff him, and then just attacked. First grabbing my dog's neck as I defended him. Switched to his ear. I fought that dog for twenty-five minutes, because my dog was on leash, this leash. That's why it split wide open, has a lot of that dog's hair on it. When I had no choice but to pull his jaws off my dog. When I did, he bit my hand, and I swung him back, opened the door in my truck, swung him back in my truck, punched him, get him off my hand, and he bit this arm. I got my dog in the shed and did what I could to advantage him up, then called nine-one at twelve twenty-four AM. Talking to nine-one, it was decided, since I didn't have an address, I'd have to wait in the street, so it's easy to find me. EMTs were professional and got me cleaned up and managed. Just off, the officer that showed up, officer kind of asked what happened, and went, and went back to his cruiser to try to locate the owner or someone to take the dog. He even commented, anyone, anyone want dirt, dog jerky? Then wanted to just let the, let it go. After almost two hours, and your fire chief was there and made a suggestion, it might not be a good idea to let this dog go. What happens if it becomes a common child? Might happen to him. So after two hours, it was decided that the, the dog would be taken by the police officer in the back of the cruiser. So I could go seek medical attention for my dog, who was really, she was really injured. Inside that packet, you'll see the injuries and the death threats I've seen after. I had to bring him to Brewer. They told me they were gonna have to cut his ear completely off. They told me to go to Scarborough. They have surgeons that deal with this on a regular basis. This is where I brought him to, where I brought him to Scarborough. And they actually cleaned me up, because I wasn't gonna go see medical attention for myself, my dog was taken care of. Then it was told it'd be six PM before anything was done. My dog would be close to being done. I spoke with Andrew Kidder, police officers from this town, and was told owner was cited for dog at large, and dog was in quarantine. As, as I had to go back to my camp and lock it up, I stopped by the owner's property and asked him about the dogs having rabies shots, and if he could pay for my medical bills. I don't care about myself, I want my dog taken care of. That conversation do not go well. He accused me of threatening him. He said, "The cops told me you put your hand in his mouth, so it's your fault." He also said that I hurt my own dog and hurt myself of, for some reason, didn't order me off his property. He said I threatened him. I did not. I left. On eight twenty-five, I called and talked to Trevor Dubey from the police department. He told me he did not get charged, and the dog was just sent home with the owner. He asked if I drove or silver-rammed, and I said I did. He said he was investigating a threat I made. I filled out a statement, sent it to him, and then discovered, and later discovered a post online accusing me with dog kidnapping twice, arson, making threats, burning his shed, trespassing for ten years. I owned the property two and a half, sending letters to town after burning his shed, stealing six lawnmowers, hurting my dog, myself, and on and on. And also being a government employee. My lawyer, I said, "Okay, my lawyer can deal with that." That was his on his Facebook page. I also called the police, made them aware, and asked about our police report for the incident that happened Sunday. And and what was posted on the tough course, okay. Maybe this, I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker, but both report, called the next day after the owner posted on Dover Fox Community Page with a picture of me in my truck, which in fact turned me into Dover Fox Cross Most Wanted, with threats to killing me, one shot, one kill, three thrusts to the chest. How can people share this to get the news out, how to look for me, me? And I was told, well, you know Facebook. And I would have and, and they told me I would have the report the next day. Nope, I didn't get a report. Called Friday, no. Told them, "Don't bother, bother contacting me, I'm coming here tonight." And after eight days, still no police report. All of which would have proved everything that was said in those statements were false. He accused me of kidnapping his dog and put it in the garage. Somebody on this board has very detailed information about that incident, because he's friends with the owner that did put it in his garage. And the animal control gave him and took it away and gave it back to the owner. The post he made was that I kidnapped his dog, put it in the garage. I beat it, then dropped it off to the police station. Well, I can, people love dogs, so people that didn't know any difference and were stupid enough to believe the post, believed it. And so I had threats in my life, many. Some are in there. Some are immediate threats that, since I'm, I actually live in a difficulty they're dealing with, because Dover Foxcroft let me down. That post on Dover Foxcroft Community Page was allowed to stay up till Friday. By that time, the damage is done, as you can see what I'm wearing. The dog was not licensed, did not have a rabies shot. And had on, but everybody's problem, everybody's property, and even caught trying to kill chickens and was locked into the neighbor's garage, a good neighbor I just met this weekend. And animal control just let the owner take it back. Police made posts looking for the dog, and someone commented that exact dog had been on their property. But Dover Foxcroft Police Department just gave the dog back with no charges, nothing. This is a dog thing. I beat that dog twenty-five minutes to get off my dog. To the point where I had to rip the dogs off my dog to save my dog, rip my hand up, and he bent my arm. To this day, I still have a police report that would, would say that I didn't, none of these things. I know I know one person on this board knows my neighbor who lives up, probably it was a large piece of property behind me, who's already informed him of the problems that he was accused of, that I'm being accused of now, and then being afforded, uh, uh, made aware of what's going on with this. And I'd like to know what's gonna happen. And I, I want to thank those two EMS workers that came there. They were professional, they made me calm down. The fire chief was real professional, you know, he didn't want that dog to get hurt somebody else. That police officer was there, made a comment, just anybody want dog jerky? Well, this, what, what's the worst could happen? We just let him go, you know what I mean? And then after eight days, I got no police report, nothing. In that packet, you'll see the, the, the print of the camp that I was gonna meet with Brian on Monday to get a permit on. That's not, not gonna be the case from further on. That property will be sold, and I won't come back to this town. Thank you.
Well, obviously, we're very sorry what happened to you. There is the number of issues you raised. For the most part, this is new information for us. We will take all of this information. We're going to look into it. We're gonna find where processes and procedures that should be in place for animal attacks to make sure that we've got proper ones that coordinate the, all the agencies, so that the animal control, EMS, and police, as well as any civil actions that are possible within the side of that.
All right, I get that. My biggest thing is that nothing was done, this dog's been a problem. That owner has been a problem in this town for a long time. I've been mayor, aware of a lot of things. I think people on this board already know about it. It was let go to the point that came to this, you know? I, I, I looked for the owner of that dog, you know, I tried to, I thought of my neighbors. You know, I don't want to hurt any dog, that's why I went to talk to the guy, because the only way to test rabies is to put the dog down. I told him I didn't want that to happen.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I was told it's quarantine, it's not quarantine. You know what I mean? I spoke with my attorney, I got attorneys, because the, the biggest part of this, this thing was shared all over the place, and anybody that's shared is gonna have litigation against them. You know, this owner is gonna have some serious problems in the future. I didn't want to bring the town to it, but it's almost as a town's libel for not doing something in the past, because it's documented, this dog's been a problem. You know, and I feel as though it's, it's gone way too far. When it's, I get death threats on my life, you know? I made a mistake of posting the vet bills on my website and my Facebook. And it was, I didn't bring anything about Dover Foxcroft, but somehow somebody cracked me down, and they got my address, so I'm getting correct death threats. And I don't want to contact them about, because obviously they don't want to handle it. And I feel as though, because what I left out too was, I think I said it when Trevor Dubey said he was definitely non-charge. I was talking, told my Andrew Kidd, he was charging dog at large. And that dog was quarantined. He wasn't quarantined nor charged a dog at large.
Yeah.
My lawyer told me he doesn't want to represent the dead man, so I had to start rabies treatment. I did one, I don't know if anybody had those, I don't know if I'm, I did one last Friday, and we're doing one today at eleven. And I got another one this Friday, and another one that Friday after that. You know, it's no fun. It should have been prevented. If they'd have done their job, this wouldn't have happened. If a police report came out when this happened, I would be able to post that, say, "Listen, I didn't kidnap any dog. I didn't kidnap your dog, brought it in my house, beat it. That's the kind of damn." The only reason we bought that property, because it, there's a brook that surrounds it, it's four of my dogs. What was it for my dogs? I wouldn't have owned that property.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm pissed off. I'm not a public speaker. I'm probably not gonna be here much longer. You might just build that camp, put it up for sale, and get out of here. Because what's, I got, there's a picture in there where I built the shed, and there's a well there. Although, you know, I had to build an extensive bridge to make that property usable. You know, I got extensive amount of money in that property. And to this, to that incident, I, I knew five people by name. And it's my two neighbors here and the one across the street. And then I got introduced to another guy that we had the same problem with, the same homeowner.
Yeah.
So it seems like it's not gonna be handled. I don't feel safe in my property. You know, I physically had people looking for me for all week. They were wrapping up down that road looking for my truck. That's why I got this vest on. And I'll make explicitly clear, and the police can hear it, any threats on my life, on my family, on my animals will be brave, brave yacht eliminated, I guarantee you. You can make threats online, behind a computer, you make threats, George, you come after me, my property, threaten my family, I will take care of myself. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a copy, Alcina's got a copy that will be, so that's obviously go to section committee, we'll coordinate and find out what we can do about this particular situation, but also to handle situations in the future. Okay. So open session for the board. If, I'm sorry, if there's, is there anything else?
Just want my, just as a follow-up to what he said. Is there anything wrong with Facebook saying you should shoot them or I'm gonna shoot? Is that a thing?
It's not for us. Yeah, I mean, in terms of Facebook, it's the wonders of social media. People can say whatever they want, and it's always up to, unfortunately, it's up to the people that are the victims to push it ahead.
So they would have something to stand on if they said?
Sure, if they believe, if they believe that threats are credible and law enforcement can get involved, and it's just, unfortunately, it's one person ranting and raving at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, after having a couple of years, can just cascade into a whole world of hurt for everybody.
Just curious, gonna have us all the time.
Unfortunately, it does. Okay. Then we will move into open session for the board. But do you have anything?
Tracy? We had, we had the fair this weekend. At the fairgrounds. Had incident where a, a old gentleman fell out of the truck while watching the parade. It wasn't just falling out of the truck. He fell out of the truck, it was a long way to the ground. It was an older gentleman. And our EMS department, thank God, was on site. They spent a lot of time working on this man to get him ready to go to a hospital. If we hadn't had those folks on site, I'm not sure that man would be with us. Because he took a header right off a backdoor pickup, right straight to the ground. I don't think he even put his arms up. But they did a fabulous job. They worked hard. They were really hard. And they were right there. And I thank God they were there. So kudos to Brian and your crew. Thank you very much. And kudos to the Dover Rovers for being there, for helping with the parking. They did a great job as well for the fair. You guys, I can't thank you enough, really. It's, it's a lot of work. A lot of work.
Tracy, I will say that this, this is an example of the all the positives that we are talking about EMS for our town. I don't think, either once we talk about the, the additional safety benefits of having our own crew be available for large events such as the fair, such as Whiskey Pie, or such as canoe races or whatever. I think that maybe that, that benefit was just overlooked in our list, long list of things.
Oh, yeah.
And so we, yeah, first year, we've already got an incident.
To add a little more to that, I know Saturday night, Brian had told me that they had a real long night. He had to split his crew up and set them different ways to help cover areas that no one like just couldn't get to.
Yeah.
So, again, we have a great crew. Can't thank them enough.
Okay, anybody else? Miss Jay?
Oh, real quick. Again, with the dog issue, I think protection will take first stab at that. With PACC, my suggestion is to go to promotion and development. They, it's an economic development, and it's for the benefit of Dover Foxcroft. With dangerous buildings, take a number. Again, with Route Seven there, it is up to the owner, which actually she has come in this year regarding the windows, and she took action. So I'm not sure that there's an absent landlord. But again, take a number, because we have several that are in worse condition than that. Question, paving on landfill, is that on target?
Scheduled for October. That's all that I've gotten from the company, that October is going to be there, starting by.
It's raining.
It is raining.
Get that into the news.
Yeah.
Was it contact?
Four. Okay.
As chair.
As chair, yes.
All right.
Hi.
Yes.
So I'll copy Tracy on the fair. We attended. What great weather we've had for the fair. Couldn't have been better. There was a great crowd there. Crowd control was good, parking was easy, and it seemed to be going off without a hitch, though it was, when watching the horse pulling. Alcina, thanks for the drains on the main roads are all painted yellow, but I assume that means they've been
Wasn't made.
Cleaned or painted yellow, do they know which one to clean?
No, DOT, those are the ones that they've cleaned.
Okay, because I was looking at them, trying to work out, have they been really cleared out? And which leads on to just brush clearing around signs and around the areas, and even though it's been dry, there is grass growing and there are things growing. Are we all on our brush removal and grass and?
Yeah, basically, they're just trying to keep up with the commencement. Well, hopefully this rain will help with the dust on the gravel and whatnot, so they don't worry about that. But yeah, Public Works has been straight out this entire summer. This way you probably can catch you on the campus, right in the maintenance.
Anybody else? Eddie?
I, um, just to speak a little bit more about the old Athens Pizza Building that Lisa referenced. I don't think Lisa was asking for it to be declared a dangerous building, more about how can we save that historic building that's at the center of our community. And so I think that might also be something that promotion and thought led to talk about. I know Um, I know. In the last couple of years, um, Central Theater have been in conversation with Charlie Fitzgerald and his partner Kathy about. That building, being interested in that building, other people have. And given that it's the first thing you see when you come to relate, it's that empty storefront, um. One of the oldest buildings in Dover, if we could take a more active role in making plans for that, that would be the one. So I think that's more what Lisa was bringing from all of.
Okay, anybody else?
Uh, thank you for the rain, um, I hope it lasts more than ten minutes. Um, so yes, uh, Pat, come email, come see us in the Promotion Development Committee, we're happy to help, um, that's part of our role. Um, this time of the year, folks, let's see, tomorrow's Tuesday, which is freshman orientation day at FA, and then the next day is school is in full swing, so. Please be careful driving, um, we're gonna be losing daylight hours, so kids are gonna be out, so. Uh, we're working on the lighting as everybody knows, so bear with us, but please, please, please pay attention to what you're doing. Don't speed, we have enough issues with that, um, and if something looks wrong, tell us. Even if you think you've sent seven hundred emails, we don't know everything that's going on. Uh, we know that there are places and roads that Elsina has requested for the state to review, whether it's for safety reasons or speed issues. Understand, there's quite a process behind the backend to get the right people involved, to do the studies, to come up with what we can do. So don't feel like you're being ignored, I guarantee she gets your info sheet sending it on, it's just, as we just heard, there's a time delay with some of this. Um, and then if you have any questions for any of the stuff that we're doing, call, email, ask.
Thank Joel, anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close open session for the board, we're gonna move to adjustments to the agenda. And so, you have one adjustment? There you go, we have, um, just arrived to us today, the, uh. The dangerous building decision order for the fifty seven, uh, fifty-six Dwelly Avenue building. So this is to, uh, let's see. Declare it dangerous. Still need to do that. Even though they, yes, yes, so we'll put that on J.
So what, ask, what, what is the name, cause I live on Paul Street, that building has been there forever. The burn building, we're talking about the burn building now? So can we get that removed?
That, that is part of what's.
That, that will take care of that?
Yep.
Great.
Okay, so we're gonna make that as J. All right, let's get started on the committee reports. Cindy?
Yes. Adam and Cindy have met a couple of times since our last select board meeting. And we, um, on the twenty-eighth of July. Uh, worked on our new contract with our attorney, our old attorney, who's now in a different practice. Uh, we re, reviewed with Elsina some other contracts and looked at, um, draft of other policies. On the twelfth of August. Um, and we worked on our conflict of interest and conduct, um, code of conduct. And, um, Jane and Steve did a lot of wordsmithing to update our on hook of interest statement. And to fit our, or to create more appropriate language for committees other than the select board. So, uh, a lot of work on that and you'll see those coming forward for a vote.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Promotion and Development.
Sure, Promotion Development Committee met for its first time on July thirtieth. Um, we picked our mission statement and went over about thirteen items, uh, for our very first meeting. The mission statement for Promotion Development, um, is that we serve as an advisory body to the select board. Dedicated to fostering a vibrant, welcoming and sustainable community here in Dover Foxcroft. The committee works to support the history, economic growth, community engagement and quality of life by promoting local businesses. Enhancing public spaces, attracting new opportunities and elevating Dover Foxcroft as a desirable place to live, work and visit. We encourage residents, entrepreneurs and partners to bring forward ideas, events and initiatives that contribute to the long-term vitality of our town. Um, so some of the things we talked about, uh, we met with the Historical Society, uh, about a plan to, actually. Is Chris here? Chris, yes, do you want to, real quick, just give everyone a quick overview of what we discussed in your own words?
Four sentences. Uh, we have a committee organized and we want to get commemorative flags on historic buildings. We've identified over a hundred potential sites. And what we're doing now is, uh, the, uh, the part of the committee is researching what the plaque will be like. In which case, how much they might cost. And another part of the committee is beginning to do, uh, research. Uh, in November, we expect to come back to you guys with some, what we think would be cost to do a reasonable number and we'll bargain back and forth. From that, we then need to start working on the website, so we can get things up on the town's website to facilitate this. Uh, we think that we can get the curse and sign to send the thirty to forty, so number like that. Uh, hopefully before Labor Day of next year.
Great.
We're really excited about this, it's gonna be a great thing for the town to do.
Yes, our committee thinks it's a great idea for people that travel, that you'll see a lot of, uh, Newland towns that have done that very thing. People will take tours to go look at who lived here and what did they do, there's a whole part of it that respects where we've come from, but educates people in the process. So we're very happy to support that. Um, Elsina's still working on potential, uh, new updated logos for Dover Foxcroft, so we gently touch base on that. Um, along with just discussing what we can do to move forward and of course invite anybody that wants to come have a conversation with us, whether you're a resident or business owner. Please come and visit us, you can email us, but if you have ideas, we want to hear them. And, uh, I'm the chair for now, so.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Uh, Public Works Committee.
Um, this should be pretty simple, Public Works Committee met on August twelfth. Um, mostly to discuss the detours for the Essex Bridge project. Um, our biggest concern was the Summer Street, North Street intersected, and what was gonna be done about that. Um, I believe that it's been addressed now, um. And, yeah, basically, everything we talked about was covered in that presentation, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, and Protection Committee.
Protection, while there are some items that are on the agenda, for example, the fire chief appointment as well as dangerous buildings. Uh, we've recently learned that our current, um, animal control officer is retiring, so we explored options of coverage. As well as where we want to go in the near future. Uh, we've also, we were also asked by Public Works to take a look at the road closure and detour from the safety perspective. Um, and I think that's about it, and we have a new agenda item. Fellas.
We do. Okay, all right, that's, thank you very much, Jane, we're done with the committee reports. We have unfinished business now with code enforcement updates.
We have complaints about two properties on Davis Street, I've done a first letter to each owner. Your response, so I'm getting ready for letter number two, and then if we don't have any response to letter number three. Then we go to protection, to see the next steps. Um, eight Mayo Street, uh, the homeowner came in last week and got a dump sticker or dump permit. So he's apparently been doing some things there, I go by. He's obviously been at the property because there's a concrete block holding the store door shut that was not there when Brian and I visited the property. Um, the sign removal, I got permission from the state for us to go in, uh, to go around town and pull those signs up. That have been all over the intersections, Tom's crew has been doing that, looks a lot better. Um, anything in the town or state right away or on a utility pole, it's supposed to come down, cause they're not legal to be there. Um, by state law. That's about it, uh, one thirty Grove has been served. Uh, we're waiting for the sixty days to see if she gets a demo permit or not. After the sixty days, we can, there's further action we can take. And then the fifty-sixth Wally, you have before you, so later.
And what is the status of? Uh, can you update us on the status of the property changeover, the sale?
It has not happened yet. Um, on the fifteenth, I talked to the, um, closing agent at Gaywood Title. And they were hoping to close by the end of the month, but they had questions about the dangerous building, uh, document that was filed in the registry. So I answered their questions, where, hold them unsure, you know, it needs to be destroyed and demolished, it's a burned out shell. Um, and that they were concerned, once that's done, can we have that document removed? So it's not on the record, and I said, we could have it. The attorney would take care of that, but whatever the state that it's done. So that would take care of that, probably. So is it your understanding that the purchase will move forward? It's my understanding it's gonna move forward, but they, I didn't have any timeframe. Hopefully by the end of the month, well, that's this week and. There's nothing in the registry yet, um, cause the attorney looked, though it hasn't been recorded yet, but it should be taking place.
Okay, great, we're just moving along. Thank you. All right, we have item B, follow-up for the Essex Street Bridge. You have a motion on this?
I move to approve as written.
Okay, any further discussion, this is to approve your, your proposal. All right.
It, it's not a discussion, just for the folks that are here, this will be next summer, that didn't come up during. The presentation, but just so people have in mind, this, the Essex Street Bridge is next summer. And then I believe you said previously, the other two smaller bridges could be next summer or the following summer.
The two smaller bridges are either gonna be summer twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
Okay.
They're out of ways.
Okay.
I'm guessing we're gonna be advertising this project this fall and awarding it this fall. Um, I'm guessing the contractor is probably not gonna jump right into the project, but I can't guarantee that, and we started early, we'll be finished early. Uh, we're telling him on Dover Foxcroft Bridge, he's gotta have the bridge open to traffic, but it's basically December of twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Got your detour out? Okay, so new business, fire chief officer of the quarter.
Move to prove the offer of employment for full-time fire chief to Brian Goddard.
Second.
Hey, now, now is time for discussion, if anybody's against this. Moved in seconded?
Yes.
Yep, all in favor? That's it, you're on the hook, Brian. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Um, okay, so new rates proposed for the fire park. Somebody wanna make a motion on this?
Move to approve the new rates for equipment usage and personnel for the fire department for out of network accounts.
Right, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, could you just explain about it a little bit?
Yeah, so these rates are developed for, uh, any mutually that we give that we don't have contracts for. Or we respond at the state's request for malicious fires or anything that we have to bill for. So the truck rates come off the national average of the mitigation of a car accident fund. And over the last year, right now, we do not have a county contract with the township of Atkinson. So every time we respond to Atkinson, they get billed per hour, per equipment or man hour, but we had to make some adjustments because things weren't. Dover wasn't getting the full return that we were supposed to be getting, so this is why the need for the fire is our wages on our rates, our workers comp, admin fees. And truck maintenance is through the roof, um, and fuel, everything's going up, and so our, our rates have to go up. So we're just making sure that town's getting reimbursed adequately when our equipment goes out, at least it's on contract.
Okay. And this did come to protection and we did discuss in full detail. The exact reasons of, you know, it, it does not make sense that we are, we are charging others. Uh, fifteen dollars an hour for an EMS person and we're paying thirty-five, I mean, month, so. We wholeheartedly recommend this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, my question is just to follow up about the, um, lack of contract with the county for Athens.
So that's not on our end, um, not gonna get into past practices, um, what happened, but. What I was told is payment hadn't been made in the last two years, so I started looking into it, dug into it, Elsina and I, um. We repa, uh, we passed some relationships to the town of Albrank, kept those contracts back in place. Um, and we proposed a contract to the county, um, at this time, they do not like our rates. Um, and we're supposed to have a meeting a few weeks ago, they were unable to make it, but they haven't been able to reschedule. I believe they want to come to the protection board of the committee to renegotiate. I think we should renegotiate, uh, this is our apparatus, this is our town, it's cost us a lot of money to maintain it, keep it on the road. Um, so right now, we don't have a contract with them, so every time we cross that line, bill by the hour, by personnel. And if they want a contract, they'll have to come back, talk to us, if not, we're getting full reimbursement of what we're sending out there.
All right. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so next, we have the agreement regarding the removal of Mayo Mill Dam with the Atlantic Salmon Federation and Nature Conservancy.
Now, I'm moved to approve the agreement regarding the removal of the dam. In substantial form as presented and further that. The town manager is authorized to execute and deliver the agreement regarding the removal of the Mayo Mill Dam. And take any other necessary and appropriate actions to effectuate this approval.
Move correction.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yep.
Uh, just making sure for everybody to hear that it's, this agreement's been reviewed by our chairman.
Yeah, Eileen and John, uh, from ANSTC are on, totally questions.
Okay.
When will they present to us?
Yeah. Uh, we should.
Coming next.
Yeah, uh, so this is not anything to get into the discussion about today, but it would be great after we sign this agreement. That they come in in a relatively short period of time to give us an update on, uh, their plan, how they see the plan unfolding timelines. And, uh, that sort of thing. Okay?
And Public Works has been assigned. As a committee to involve.
Yes, uh, Public Works would be, would be the, the logical go-to if there's any questions that arise as we go forward. Uh, our understanding is for the short term, we've got to get the, uh, basically the authorization. Things settled with the, the federal government before we get into the nuts involved, so it's probably gonna be quite some time before we have any. Uh, direct involvement, but Public Works Committee is the, the go-to for that. Okay, the other discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we've got the, the committee assignments. We've got one, one change we wish to make.
I move to allow select board member Kevin Sargent to replace select board member Tracy Redman. Um, as the member of the Promotion Development Committee.
Second. Okay, um, this was. Pretty much non-controversial, we're doing a swap, um, keeping Kevin out of trouble, so, uh, all in favor? Well, we knew you were gonna vote. You know, I don't know.
We didn't vote on the original.
We probably, in the future, we probably should just. We probably, in the future, we probably should, just to ensure that it was on the record and we're all in agreement with how things, I mean, it could be that one member has a beef and wants to be on a particular committee or braces condition, off a committee.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, if we make adjustments after our initial business meeting, we should probably make it formal. Okay, um, Pinecrest Board of Directors. I'm G.
I would move to, to select board member Emery Cox to the Pinecrest Board of Directors. Is that good? Is that good?
Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Yeah.
Thank you, Emery's.
Okay, Dover Rovers ATV Club Haunted Trail Special Event.
I would like to move to approve the temporary usage of the landfill road by the Dover Rovers ATV Club for the 2025 Dover Rovers Haunted Trail Special Event.
You have a second?
And Foxcroft Center.
Yeah, so it's. Can that be amended?
Yes, it's, it's not in, it's in the agreement.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, oh, it's in the case and Foxcroft Center.
And Foxcroft Center.
Yeah, I'll still say.
The crossing, do we have to do anything special with that? Crossing on the state road or? No. We're all clear to cross? We don't have to, no paperwork or do?
No, hang, and hang on, Julie is, is reminding us that we already gave Dover Rovers permission for the crossing 15.
Well, no, I thought the Foxcroft Center part of that road, they already.
16 rather, sorry.
The permission that you're, I mean, uh.
We can go from the trail north.
Yeah.
You want the peril, but you want to go south.
Oh.
Dump road to back to railroad.
Yeah, okay, so we have, you, you've got that now. Okay, we're all set on that? Okay, all in favor? The votes?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Ordinance Committee. Item I.
I move to approve the reconvening of the ordinance committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Who's on that?
Nobody's on it yet. We seem to get the committee started.
And so could you just say in the past, not just been select board, it's been
Correct.
planning board of folks, other people from the community?
Yep.
So how do you see that being taken from going forward?
We will put out a request for people who are interested in, in participating. And then we'll go through the usual procedure that we go through with the admin committee, looking at all the candidates and making proposals for the full board.
Thank you. I'm using the Chris Moss method of educating the public by asking questions that I already know. I have learned that from Chris over the years, so thank you.
Okay.
And I have one thing, because we, earlier, the Athens Pizzeria came up, and that has been a topic that the ordinance committee actually will be looking at. We've all discussed that, looking at the ordinances to make sure that we can do the things we need to do with town attorney, so.
Sure.
That, that'll be on the list for evaluation.
Yep.
And, and actually I had attended the planning board meeting in which this was discussed, and I think people need to take a step back and, and realize, um, that ordinances are enforceable. Policies are kind of practices we want to encourage. And so when, when people label something, I think you need to look at the issue versus saying, oh, we're going to have an ordinance, or, oh, we're going to have a policy. Um, there needs to be neighbor talking with neighbor. I think the experience with parking, you know, there needs to be, we're all in this together versus slamming a, an ordinance or a policy or whatever. So just a word of caution in my view about the ordinance committee.
Yep, and also there's, uh, in addition to the more interesting work that the ordinance committee does, they also were tasked with some pretty boring things of going through and taking state mandated language and working it in. Um, it's riveting stuff, but, but there is, there is some, there is some good stuff in there too. Um, I was on that committee for a few years and it was, it was some amazing discussions came out of that. Not the state stuff that was boring. Okay, uh, we've had a first and a second. Okay, all in favor? All right, now we're at the dangerous building. Uh, we don't have a replaying one more thing, but looking for adoption of this.